For the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord God.
Thank you.
Do.
Please take roll.
Commissioner Mick Schmansky.
Here.
Commissioner Roger Yoder.
Here.
Commissioner Pamela Weiner. Commissioner Marlene McBride. And Commissioner Mark Whitliff.
Here, thank you. Now we move along to election of officers, and I will hand it over.
We will now open the floor for nominations for Chair. Do we have any nominations? Please state your name for the record and the name of your nomination.
I'd like to nominate Mark Whitliff.
Second it.
Third it.
Name, who are you?
Who am I?
Yes.
Okay, let's see who I want to be. I'll be Roger Yoder.
So Commissioner Whitliff, do you accept or decline?
I accept.
Okay. Commissioner, Mark Whitliff has been nominated for Chair. Do we have any further nominations? Do we have any further nominations? And finally, do we have any further nominations? Okay. So Commissioner, Mark Whitliff has been nominated for... So I need a second, I'm sorry, to elect Commissioner Mark Whitliff for Chair.
Sure, you can second.
Marlene.
Marlene, okay.
What do we do?
I second it.
Okay, so Commissioner Mark Whitliff has been elected for Chair. Are I going to take a roll?
Yes.
Thank you for being patient with me tonight. Commissioner Schmansky.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitliff.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for voting me in. Appreciate that.
Is this a quorum?
Yes.
So for the election for other officers, I'm going to turn it back over to Chair Whitliff.
Appreciate that, thank you. So the next is the Vice Chair, and I would like to nominate Roger Yoder for Chair. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? None? Please take roll.
Does he accept the nomination?
Oh, yes. You accept?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right. Do we, did we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Marlene, second it.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And last is the Recording Secretary, and I would nominate Marlene McBride.
I'll second it.
And any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? None? Can you accept?
Yes.
Okay. Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride. Chair Whitliff.
Yes.
Okay.
Congratulations, Marlene.
Thank you.
You're the longest-running Secretary there is.
Hey, I'm going to be eighty-three tomorrow.
Happy birthday. See what you get for your birthday?
I'll go on.
Nothing wrong with that.
And now you have to appoint, was it Recording Secretary?
Correct.
Recording Secretary.
And that...
Go ahead, you can introduce yourself.
I'm Kalen Kolnowski.
Kalen?
Kalen.
Kolnowski.
I appoint...
What does that mean?
I don't...
Who is she?
I don't think I've met her before.
Oh.
Recording Secretary, correct?
Oh, she is? She worked for the city?
Yes.
Oh. I mean, that's the first time we met. Okay.
She looks like a little kid.
I know. She's like a little kid, I know.
I appoint Kalen Koln...
Kolnowski.
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 Yep. I know.
For Recording Secretary.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I will second that. Can I second?
No, I'm here.
Oh, no, she did.
I can second that, right Kalen?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, I'll second that.
If you want, you're the Commander, you can do it.
All right.
And do we need roll on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Couple of days in the seat and you're already an officer.
Yeah, should get a badge.
Approval of agenda. At this time, the Planning Commission can take action to approve the February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second by Roger. Any comments, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes.
Okay.
Conflict of interest. Is there any member of the Planning Commission that has any type of conflict with tonight's agenda? Please speak up. None?
None.
Okay. Very good. Now, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes. Planning Commission can approve the December fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes. But we do have some errors in this, and I will go through those at this time. An approval of agenda on the December fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, with the yeas, ayes, Marlene McBride is missing. Approval of minutes. The motion was, shows by Slavinsky, it was Schmansky. The yeas, Commissioner McBride is missing.
Yeah, I know, just all that when I read it.
And then we move on to, public comment on agenda-related items. The new business, short-term rentals with Tracy Davis with Housing North. And under old business with the master plan. Is that correct, Teresa?
Under new business, you confirmed it was short-term rental, then public comment. Oh. Is that correct?
Yes. Public comment on agenda-related items.
Yep.
And then the old business was master plan.
Correct.
Okay. And it looks to be... That is it. Make a motion, we accept with the adjustments?
Yes.
Just provided. Do we take a roll on the...
We do.
Yes.
Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes. Thank you. Correspondence has been shared with the Planning Commission and not, will not be read aloud. Presentation, Speaker Sammy with the Manistee County Tourism Authority.
Thanks for inviting me today. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and happy birthday, Commissioner. I'm Sammy from Manistee Tourism, and I was asked a few weeks ago to come in and talk a little bit about tourism, but also give a tourism lens on short-term rentals. So I want to give a little bit of information about the Tourism Authority. I was here probably this time last year to talk a little bit about what we do, how we're funded, the mission of the Tourism Authority. And had I not been asked to talk about short-term rentals, I would have come anyway, so thanks for the opportunity. But essentially, I promote Manistee as a destination for travelers. And I'm not a city employee, I'm not a county employee, but I promote the county. We are funded by Public Act fifty-nine, which is the hotel assessment. So any hotel that has ten rooms or more assesses a five percent on pre-tax sales of their rooms. We also have individual members, so there's some hotels that are smaller than ten. And we also have a few short-term rentals that collect the assessment that are part of our portfolio, so to speak. And just a quick snippet of a little bit about what I do. I love what I do. I get to do a lot of fun things. I think my job is, is going to make me go broke because I have to buy bikes, I have to golf, I have to do all these fun things. And I certainly love living in Manistee. I live on the river, and I saw a fox this morning running across the Manistee River where it's frozen. So I'm from El Paso, Texas, and we don't get to see a lot of things like that when you grow up in the desert. So to be able to live in Manistee, but then to also share all the great things that there are to do in Manistee, makes my job really fun. Some of the other things that we do is destination and asset development. We built Origins at the end of the Riverwalk. We're working on some sign packages with the City of Manistee. We're helping Arcadia rebrand, Arcadia, and do some signage there. But essentially, I do a lot of marketing to some new markets. So Chicago is a growing place for us. You should start seeing a lot more people from Chicago here who are travelers. Probably people from Toledo, people from, I know, Ohio. They don't have these things in Ohio.
Oh, we don't want no more people.
Indianapolis. But we also do community and event support. We have about two hundred and fifty barricades that we loan out to organizations to use for, you know, security, for safety. If they have to block off areas to have a liquor area, they borrow those from us, free of charge. And we just support the community. We advertise Slay Bell, we advertise Forest Festival, so we try to get people here. We recently installed a downtown camera that's on the Vogue. You can see that at nine and ten news, and it's a lovely view of our downtown area.
Yeah. You just did that, didn't you?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
It's pretty fun.
Because I was complaining before why we never had Manistee. When they showed Cadillac, Grayling, Potaski.
Yeah. I wasn't there. So now that I'm there, we have cameras now.
Yes, we do. Very good.
I love being able to share all the great things that there are here. But I also want to talk a little bit about the impact of our effort. So one of our goals was to expand into new markets. And we've done that by doing advertising in Indiana, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Illinois. And we track all of this through not only some of our digital buys online, but we've got the entire county geofenced. So we can see when people go in and out. We track cell phones. I don't know who has the cell phones. I don't know their numbers, but I know that somebody with, from Chicago, has come into Manistee and has spent four hours or more. So I'm not spying on you, we're being efficient with how we track our advertising effort.
You can tell when somebody comes in from out of state into this community by a cellphone tracker?
Essentially. Every month, I get a report that tracks the previous month's movement throughout the community. So we can tell you how many people were here in a given hour, their pathway in, where they went throughout the county, how long they spent here, and...
Unbelievable.
We're trying to be smart with how we place advertising. So I don't have a huge budget, but we like to be smart with the money that we do have. So, and it's...
And asking to see what they're doing when they come, just not driving through.
Know what they're doing. So the number-one location in Manistee County is downtown Manistee. That's where people go. And, you know, I've talked to the Sheriff. He has asked for pathways in for grants, for example. And I can tell him what are the main pathways that people are coming in, where they're coordinating, where they're, how many people are in each area. So, and it's in general, so it's not going to be exact, but it's going to be pretty close. And it just makes us smarter with how we place our ads. And some of that data, because I love data, we have roughly eleven hundred overnight lodging units in Manistee County. These are people who are collecting the five percent lodging assessment. There's other hotels throughout the county. They're just not collecting the assessment because they're not ten rooms or more, or they're short-term rentals. So I'll get into that in a second. But the average daily rate, and these are numbers, by the way, from two thousand twenty-three. The average daily rate for hotels was roughly a hundred and sixty-four per night. The average daily rate for a short-term rental is roughly two hundred and thirteen dollars per night. So short-term rentals are getting roughly more money than hotels are getting. And we operate, I mean, this is a summertime destination. I'm trying to get more people here in winter, more people in fall. Just a little side note, the Manistee County Road Commission reported like three days ago that there were a hundred and thirty-six and a half inches of snow. This time last year, there was fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
So when you have snow, there's an opportunity for snowmobilers, for cross-country skiers, for ice fishermen. So this has been a really good winter, and I anticipate that next year's numbers will be even better. But in summer, we are roughly at about an eighty-eight percent occupancy for the lodging units that pay the assessment. So that's what I look at. So roughly eighty-eight percent of hotel rooms are full in summer. That might fluctuate a little bit, you know? There might be ninety-eight on a weekend. But for the most part, summertime capacity is roughly eighty-eight percent.
Hey, Sammy.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I do have a question. On the average night cost at a hotel room rental, how do we compare to our neighbor counties?
We're still an affordable destination, and I think that's what Manistee's competitive advantage is. I mean, we're right in the middle of Grand Rapids and Traverse City. So if you go to Grand Rapids, you're probably going to pay more. If you go to Traverse City, you're going to pay more. So we're in a really nice spot in between. And it's now up to me to market to those people, to tell them, if you've been to Traverse City and Grand Rapids, maybe give Manistee a try.
Yeah.
And tourism since two thousand twelve has had a hundred and forty-six percent growth. So that's an industry. I mean, it is an industry in Manistee. And I know largely people think of us as a summertime destination, but tourists bring commerce to our retail shops. They pay taxes, they get gas, so they pay an assessment. So there's an opportunity with tourism to continue growing. But we either need more hotels, or we need to regulate short-term rentals. The visitor spend in two thousand twenty-three was roughly a hundred and fifty-two and a half million. That's food, that's gas, that's any kind of stuff that they buy retail while they're here. So per person, the average visitor spent about two hundred and twenty-eight dollars per person a day. And, I'm sorry, that's eighty-four, eighty-four dollars for a day-tripper, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars if they spent the night, and two hundred and twenty-eight average to be here. And most guests will stay about one and a half days when they're here. And that household income of the travelers is roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars. The other part that's interesting to me is that about forty-one percent of folks who came here are repeat visitors. So we have an opportunity to look for people who haven't been here before, but I think almost half of the people who come here, they want to come back. And I think it's because Manistee is such a nice place to visit. One in six jobs throughout the county are supported because of tourism. And about fifteen million in local tax revenue is created by tourism throughout the county. And this year, every single category that the State of Michigan tracks for tourism, which is lodging, food and beverage, retail, transportation, and recreation, they all increased in two thousand twenty-three, and I anticipate two thousand twenty-four. And so far, very early into two thousand twenty-five, that that'll be the case again. So in two thousand twenty-three, roughly seven hundred and four thousand people traveled to Manistee County and spent at least four hours. So there are people that drive through, I'm thirty-one all the time. I don't track them. If they spend four hours or more, then we track them. We look at overnight visitors, we look at day-trippers, and those are the folks that spend here four hours in a day. And then we look at in-state and out-of-state people, so we can make some comparisons. But roughly seven hundred and four thousand people visited the county in two thousand twenty-three. So now, a little bit about the county lodging snapshot. And again, these are hotel rooms or short-term rentals that collect the five percent assessment. So we have roughly eleven hundred. The number of hotels, that means we have twenty hotels throughout the county that at peak are open, and that's nine hundred and forty-one rooms. Year-round, five hotels close through the winter. So we only have fifteen hotels throughout the county and eight hundred and eighty-seven rooms. And then our member short-term rentals are a hundred and fifty. That means properties that have ten or more, so Manistee vacation rentals, for example, they're members. A new management, they're members as well. And then we have a couple of one-offs here and there. This is where short-term rentals are throughout the entire county. We use a very similar tool to what you use. We use what's called Air DNA, which is roughly three percent, it might be two to three percent off, either more or less, but it's roughly a sound tracking tool that cruises the short-term rental sites, looking for short-term rentals. So if a guy's on the street going, hey, man, I got an Airbnb, but I'm not advertising it, I won't know about it. It's got to be an online Airbnb. So there's roughly four hundred throughout the county. And I've got it divided by zip code. So within four-nine-six-six-zero, we have roughly two hundred within the four-nine-six-six-zero zip code, which some of those might be in filer, some of those might be in Manistee Township. It's just a zip code thing. So Manistee, again, has the bulk of short-term rentals. But again, of the five hundred throughout the county, only a hundred and fifty of them are paying any kind of assessment or, you know, some kind of regulation. So I'm going to take a step and talk about the benefits of short-term rentals, and then I'm going to take a step and talk about like the business of short-term rentals. Short-term rentals fill a need. I mean, there is an opportunity to increase tourism capacity, and there's different accommodation types. If you are, like, I'll give you an example. I'm a skier. When I go skiing, it's very difficult to lug skis and your boots and all the things that go with being a skier up five floors to a hotel. So you probably want to stay in a house, especially if you go with a big group of people. It's more efficient to stay in a house. So short-term rentals offer different types of accommodations that a traditional hotel or motel might not offer. It diversifies some of the lodging. When you stay in a house, you also have, tend to stay longer. And you increase tourism in lesser-known areas. For example, fishermen that might go to Brethren or Caliva or stay out near Wellston. We only have a handful of hotels out there. So fishermen tend to stay in short-term rentals, or they can't. But short-term rentals, there's, without a hotel in Brethren, that's where they can stay, is in a short-term rental. So it helps diversify and increase tourism into smaller areas. It also helps promote a local culture. I mean, people are staying in a neighborhood where they can see what people are like. And there's property tax revenue, there's an encouragement of investment in these properties and developing these properties. So there are some benefits to some short-term rentals. And it encourages an additional income for property owners. If, if I own a property, say I own two houses in Manistee, I can have someone helping me pay my rent if they're staying in my short-term rental.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Or yes, sir.
You, you say you have short-term rentals under your leadership or something?
So...
I mean, do you have anything, are they, do they have to meet any qualifications, or are they inspected, or are they...
The short-term rentals who are members, they operate under a business model that they have to be inspected, they register with the city. They collect an assessment on our behalf and pay us. I don't manage short-term rentals. I just look for short-term rentals who collect the assessment and remit that to the Tourism Authority. One of our biggest members is Manistee Vacation Rentals. Tim Riley and his family own that business, and I think they manage seventy-eight throughout the county. And they're inspected every year. They pay taxes like they should, they're registered as a business in Manistee. And they also note that you're in a Manistee vacation rental in front of each of their properties, they have a sign.
Is there a limit how many people can stay in a short-term rental? Say you have a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, is there a capacity limit?
I am not aware of a capacity limit. So that's where some regulation would come in. So our position on short-term rentals is that they need to be regulated. If I'm going to have a garage sale, I got to tell the city about it. If it's a really good garage sale, why should I be able to operate a short-term rental and not tell the city about that? That they're an inhabitants in a occupied unit, you need to know about it. We believe that. We also think they need to be regulated locally. We don't want Lansing telling us how we need to manage short-term rentals. Lansing doesn't know what happens in Manistee. Just like what happens in Jackson is not going to happen in Manistee. So we want them regulated on a local level. We also want local jurisdiction, because only the local authorities understand the fabric of Manistee. And for you to be able to regulate rentals, it goes over better with your population and your constituents. So we want to see regulation on short-term rentals. But short-term rentals need to follow the same requirements that hotels have. Hotels are inspected, hotels pay taxes, hotels have licenses, and, and they contribute to this community. And they comply with all safety and insurance coverage regulations. I don't know how every short-term rental operates in that respect. But as a tourism director, one of the worst things that could possibly happen, in my opinion, is a group of bros comes golfing, and they're having such a good time, and they're playing out on a deck, and that deck collapses because it hasn't been inspected. At a hotel, it's been inspected.
Right.
It hasn't been inspected on just some Joe who has a place to rent down the street. So we want them regulated. Oh, that's it. So that was easy. I'm happy to take some questions or some feedback and answer some questions the best that I can. If I don't know the answer, I will get back to you for sure. But do you have any questions?
Do you ever, your office field any complaints where people have checked into a vacation rental that was not up to par?
I have not. In fairness, we only promote the vacation rentals who are members. And our members are, are good-standing members with really nice properties.
Because I, I happen to have gone into a few vacation rentals that were up for sale. And I was shocked at the, at the condition of them, and that they were literally rented up until... And that they were literally rented up until the time that they were trying to sell these places. And I thought, holy cow, if I came up here and that's what I got, I'd be trying to call somebody to complain. And I don't know who that would be if it wasn't you.
It's, in fairness, I don't know if a lot of people know what the Tourism Authority does. We kind of have a way of flying below the radar. My guess is they might call the Chamber or they might call the Police Department. But I have never, I've stayed in, I've stayed in short-term rentals before. And they're typically ski trips, you know, you go up to Nubs or whatever, and there's not a big hotel around to stay in, so you stay in a house. But, you know, I've not fielded any complaints, so.
And and speaking of flying, how's the new airport been doing? Has their numbers been increasing and has that made a difference, do you think?
So one of the other things, I love data, I'm such a nerd. And we track TSA data as well. So it's my understanding that airport traffic has increased. In fact, we just did a promotion with Contour Air at the travel show in Chicago. And a lot of people said to us that they had no idea that there was even a daily flight to Chicago. And I said, well, now there's two. So I think it's gonna even build some momentum. And I'm just pleased that we can book flights through Contour beyond a Chicago destination, since they're affiliated with American, so.
So you are affiliate, or not affiliated, but you are in in contact with the airport as far as people coming and going there too?
Yeah, we've got a tourism kiosk at the airport. And Barry Lind, the airport manager, is on our board. He is our treasurer, as a matter of fact, so he offers some really good insight. I enjoy working with them. We are very lucky that we have an airport that has such a good service. And I've been on the jet to Chicago. I don't know if anyone's taken the flight, but it's quick, it's very smooth. I've had a good experience when I've flown it. They even have an app. So I've had a very positive experience and I think it's only gonna get better.
I've had friends fly from places to Chicago and then to Blackburn. They said it was great.
Good. Yeah, it's, I think our next opportunity needs to be a rental car place. I hear that. I do hear that a lot.
Yeah, I don't think
And I had to, I rented a car a couple of weeks ago and I had to drive to Cadillac to pick it up. So it sure would be nice to get one here.
Yeah, 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 that's true. Yeah.
I think ultimately, we need short-term rentals, but we do need some regulation of them. And this isn't the wild, wild west. Somebody shouldn't just be able to open up their house, I'm gonna take your money, you can stay here and not have to tell the authorities, not have their home inspected for safety. I mean, carbon monoxide, whatever. We want to make sure that guests and people who live here are safe. We also want to make sure that when a guest does stay in a neighborhood at an Airbnb, they feel that there's tension if there's a neighbor that doesn't want a short-term rental here. Reaching out, talking to the neighborhoods, understanding the fabric of the neighborhood and what maybe can maintain a short-term rental in it. Your job is hard, the city council's job is hard. I'm giving you one lens. I'm sure there's a million opinions about what short-term rentals are. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to tell you what our stand is on it. And there are some that can be very viable businesses that pay the rent, that pay their taxes and benefit from the fact that Manistee is a area that people want to visit. That's the beauty of this, is that people want to come here. We just have to figure out how we're gonna accommodate them.
Any other questions? Raj?
I had one. When you were here last time, you said you were going to be putting up kiosks downtown and that to help people find things.
Yep.
I I don't know if that ever took place.
It did. We're in the Westshore Building. We have the vestibule right off of Maple and First or Maple and River. So our, all the tourism information is there. Since then, we've put one in the airport. We have one at Pleasant Valley Community Center in Arcadia. And I hope we can put one in Oneakama as well, so we're spread out. And then you can always come to our office too. Yeah. And this year, we're gonna launch a new website as well, so we'll have even better information. We haven't updated our website in about ten years, so it's time. So we're also gonna launch a program called Local Stoke, which trains hospitality workers in all the great assets that there are to do here. I get asked all the time, where's the best place for beach glass? Or where's a good place to have pizza? And every time they ask me, do you live here? I say, yes, I do. And you just picked the right person to ask for it. So we want to make sure everybody has that information, because in all honesty, I had no idea about a lot of the assets that Manistee had until I got this job. And I can't imagine that I'm alone. And I feel like I'm a relatively informed constituent, but I had no idea about, someone used the term Maxwell Town, and I'm like, where's that? So understanding our community is important. And so we want to launch this program that starts with hospitality workers and then will include everybody.
I know the tourist books that you put out and that, you know, the different ones, they were excellent.
Thank you.
Just excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to see maybe the seniors center promoted in them, because we have so many activities that are open to the public.
We gotta put the seniors through the Local Stoke program too.
Yeah.
If I may, how, you mentioned Arcadia and Oneakama. How big of an area do you actually cover then?
The entire county, so all of Manistee.
Oh, oh, Manistee, okay, yeah, all right.
And we've got a pretty big golf course there, so.
Yeah, we do.
Arcadia Bleffs is the number one public golf course in the country. So to have that within the county is also a nice gem too.
Yeah, that, yeah, I believe that. Yeah, no, thank you.
Nick, you have any?
Nope, good.
Thank you.
I just, I have a couple of questions for you, Sam, and I won't take much time. You mentioned that you're at the Chicago Show. Do you do any other shows?
This was our first show back since COVID. So we'll be at a show called Destinations International. We'll go to the Governor's Conference on Tourism. But this was our first trade show back in four years and the first one since I've been at the Tourism Bureau. So I think it went pretty well. We were in a Michigan booth right across from Traverse City in Detroit. And what was amazing is to be able to talk to people from Chicago who say, well, I always go to Traverse City. I haven't been to Manistee. We always drive through. So it's nice to actually talk to people and tell them about all the things that there are to do in Manistee.
Excellent. And then with the Conventioners Bureau, are you starting to prep for the US-31 rebuild?
Yeah, you know, we need, we need the project, absolutely. I think there's some construction fatigue that, you know, as residents, it's gonna be uncomfortable for a little while, but we we need this project. So, yeah, we'll do what we can to help educate people, because we don't want people bypassing downtown. Same thing with when the Gateway Project is under construction, we want to help with communication around that as well. So and anything that gets done with the streetscape, the riverwalk, because people will look to us for, is this closed? Can we still access, you know, whatever location? So we'll be very involved with that for sure.
How come you didn't say anything about the bridge? That was closed for a year.
Aren't we all trying to forget about the
Old news, Roger.
Old news.
We're still traumatized.
Yeah, we need to, there's gonna be some growing pains to have that progress and to take care of. The beauty of being in a city that's so old is we gotta take care of these things, right?
Yes, we do. Well, take care of your Marlin door.
Yeah. Opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Andrew Stafford with the Chamber.
Echo.
That's a hard act to follow.
It is, it is.
She's good.
Yeah.
You should hear her sing.
Sam, are you singing?
Yep.
Where am I? There you go.
So I'm Andrew Stafford. I'm the Director of Economic Development. I feel like it's been probably a couple of months since, probably November, since I was last here. But really exciting stuff just took place. Me and Teresa worked hard throughout December and January to get the city recertified in what's called redevelopment-ready certification from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which is the state of Michigan's economic development arm. And I kind of wanted to take some time during this meeting to just give a reminder as to what that program is, why it's beneficial, and take a bit of time to focus on the priority sites that we select, where are we at with them, and kind of what planning commission's role is, and maybe the way we should be thinking about these priority sites that we listed. If you remember, these were determined through a survey back in October. And this presentation was given during the joint meeting for city council back in November. So it's a little bit shortened, just for the sake of time. But getting right into it, just to give an overview of the presentation, we're gonna talk about what is RRC, Manistee's history, the benefits of participating in RRC, and then also the priority sites, just as a refresher as to what sites were selected. There are six of them. And before I even get into talking about the sites, I want to just put a emphasis on not all sites are actively listed on the real estate market. These are sites that are just potentially not being used to their highest investment use and that the community kind of has focused on as going forward, there is potential for redevelopment on these sites and potential to do something more on these sites. So some of the sites you'll see aren't going to be on the active market. So lost control here, Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're okay.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. So RRC is a technical assistance program put on by the state of Michigan. And what that really means is they've identified best practices throughout the entire country that communities that are normally identified as economically strong communities are doing X, Y, and Z. And so they've packaged these best practices and said, you know, we want to encourage other communities in Michigan to work towards being a kind of easy-to-work-with community, so that when we get developers and projects in the state, they know that they can go to these communities and that their processes are going to be streamlined, smooth. Everything's going to be transparent and easily accessible. And from a planning standpoint, a large part of this program is focused on land use and land use best practices. So that's where Teresa plays an extremely vital role in this, where it's looking over zoning ordinances. Are we with the times with our density and with parking minimums? And what are other communities doing across the country that we're seeing are driving success, right? And this isn't meant to say that we need to have extremely quick growth in development. So it's something that's really saying, when development does occur, it's streamlined in E, in easy process that's transparent. So this is a general overview of all the communities throughout the state of Michigan that are taking part in the redevelopment program through MEDC. And just to give an overview of the history of RRC in Manistee, we started all the way back in twenty sixteen, when it was first launched by the state. And we were actually within the first ten communities to become certified in twenty seventeen. The certification lasts four years. And so every four years, you have to do a kind of a complete overhaul and make sure that every best practice is met. But me and Teresa are working year-round to make sure that the annual checklist is met, because there are annual expectations that need to be refreshed and just always have an eye on. So this, from, we got recertified in twenty-one, another four years went by, so twenty-five, we got recertified at the end of January. Kind of just happy to report that we did get that recertification. But outside of just the best practice portion, the benefits of being a redevelopment-ready community, there's really three main buckets. And the first one is, it's almost an inherent good because of the best practices identified. These are things that we should strive for as a community to do. We should want to have easy, local government processes. We should have a clean zoning ordinance that doesn't have any contradictions in it. We should have a zoning ordinance that's always reviewed in top of mind, as well as a master plan that's top of mind. And these best practices are kind of pushing communities to do that. And so within itself, it's an inherently good thing, that that benefit is from just taking part in the program. The second is, by being RRC-certified, we unlock state technical assistance. So me, Teresa, as well as Tracy Davis and a lot of other people in our community who are actively working for housing in different development projects, we get access to certain MEDC staff members that we would otherwise not have access to if we weren't a redevelopment-ready community. So that technical assistance is huge when it comes to assisting developers in doing construction in our community. And then third is funding. By being RRC-certified, we become more competitive on state grants. So it helps get more state grant dollars into our community, which is also just a fantastic thing. You know, I know Bill's been really great at getting dollars here. So we're gonna kind of walk through the six priority sites that were identified. Stop me if you have any questions. And again, these are projects in properties that are identified as, they're not, there's potential for growth on it. And, you know, the community has kind of struggled with them in the past. And these are areas where we really want to see something special take place. So the first one that was voted top of the list this year was one hundred and sixty Memorial Drive. That is the old Save-A-Lot or old Olson's property currently. There is multiple businesses on that site. But it is about five acres, it's zoned, it's C-three. And the property owner does understand that there's a higher use. There was a project back in twenty seventeen that was proposed that was shot down. But a lot of people have still been looking at that property, just due to its proximity to the channel, as well as those veterans park that is right across Memorial Drive. The second property that was voted is the wear hardware. I wish I put it in aerial shot, because this property is on the market, but it encapsulates three different addresses. And this property is really special, because it has that egress from US-31 and Division Street. And it's been on the market for about two years for six hundred thousand dollars. And this is a property where I think there's room for the city to be able to package this in an RFP of sorts. Of course, with the consent of the property owner and the realtor. But kind of project what we think could happen on this property, given the traffic count on thirty-one and the access to Division and having this feeling that it's part of the downtown. Because it's, it's part of the DDA district that stretches up Division Street. And so this property could potentially have an RFP on it that's really statewide. That kind of projects our community vision for that site. The third property is the Music Vault. This has been a pain point for a lot of years now, to my understanding. It is currently on the market and since the publication of the Gateway Project on M-Live and the News Advocate throughout January, there's been significant traction in downtown. People who are interested in investing in our downtown. When you see a ninety-million-dollar investment going into a community, obviously, that translates into property appreciation and investors get very curious. So there has been a lot of traction, no solid deal on this. But this is another property where whoever does do a project in it, it is a heavy lift, because it is an old building, because it is downtown Manistee. And so from a planning standpoint, to make a project in a building like this cash flow or make financial sense, they may need special land use permits in other zoning variances that would go before you. So that's something to consider if somebody is, does approach you with a project regarding this property is, it's a heavy lift, you know, millions of dollars into this property to get activated and functional and vibrant and contributing to our community. The fourth is Jones Dairy Building down on the Outsider. There has been some activity on this. It has not been officially listed. on this. It has not been officially listed, but there has been some activity on the site that is confidential. So this one has gotten activity throughout the year. The fifth is the Water Works Building, and this is a really interesting historic property in Manistee, and it was kind of a no-brainer why it was voted so high on the survey. It's city-owned, so it gives you that autonomy to do what you want with the property from a city standpoint. And this is another property where, from a city standpoint, the idea of releasing an RFP, seeing what firms can come up with from a way to activate the space, would probably be the best path forward. But because it's in a residential area of Manistee, this might also take some innovative zoning solutions when a project comes before you because of the nature of the building. It may want to be commercial. It might not fit that surrounding residential atmosphere on your way down to First Street Beach. So that's something to consider with this property, especially if a project does materialize on it once an RFP is released. The sixth and final is the Old Chamber Building. This is not on market. Chamber Board is still determining paths forward to, you know, kind of highest and best use for this property. And this is uniquely situated right on that River Walk, so I think there's a lot of opportunity for this property as well. So just wanted to run through these six properties. Obviously, there's a lot of other properties to consider in Manistee. For example, the 427 Water Street, the old Bell Telephone Building that's right outside of City Hall, that's currently listed. And there has been significant traction on that. I fielded probably five or six calls regarding potential incentives on that property. So there's been a lot of interest in the DDA area, anything that has relative proximity to the Gateway Project. So is there any questions? I know that was a quick overview. I will be back in front of you most likely in the next two months to give our annual chamber update, and that will have all things economic development for '24. So I will be back in front of you if you have anything outside of RRC-related.
Go ahead, Roger.
Uh, the Fablite Building. Could you explain what happened there?
At Fablite?
Yeah, the Fablite pulling out and moving down in Luddington?
Sure. So Fablite does commercial office furniture.
Yeah.
Right? And everybody knows that the office furniture industry was really decimated by COVID, and the real estate for office, office space is terrible, more or less not. You just don't need this space anymore. And given the size of the company, they thought it best to consolidate down to Luddington. And so that was that move. There's more commercial space in Luddington where their sister company is.
So how many jobs did we lose in Manistee to that effect?
So they didn't actually terminate any jobs for Fablite. They were all offered the same role down in Luddington. Obviously, there may be some loss due to transportation access, but obviously, we're working with the owners of that property to make sure that there's a seamless transition on that property for the backfill, for another employer. And something to look at as well, I mean, that was recently renovated, and when you talk about turnkey-ready property in northern Michigan for heavy industry, that's one of the best sites you're going to get in the 10-county region of northwest Michigan. It's 80,000 square feet, so it's a huge space.
Right. So it's listed as used to be?
So it's not listed. That is not an active site.
So right now, it's just, you got the key in the lock and it's vacant, right?
No, so I can't speak on what's currently going on there right now.
Oh, okay, okay.
They went into such extensive remodeling and addition, you'd think they would have been, it wasn't that long ago, would have done some kind of research before they put so much into that and moved down there. It just seems kind of strange to go to all that expense and then close up.
Yep, yep. I mean, COVID was unforeseen for a lot of people, and COVID was that trigger that really decimated the office furniture industry.
But it also gave us an opportunity for people to move to Manistee who work from home. We never had that.
Yep, exactly.
Something to really kind of...
Yep, yep. There was a 400-person increase in the population over '21, over the COVID times. So that was definitely a positive, if you want to look at it like that. Any other questions?
I don't have any, Andrew.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Move along to public hearing. An ordinance to amend Article 2, Section 206, entitled Definitions/Interpretations E. of the Zoning Ordinance, City of Manistee. So we will turn it over to Teresa.
So yes, we have this public hearing today. It needs, I just need a recommendation to the legislative body, the council, along with transmitting a summary of any comments received tonight at the public hearing. The recommendation can just be done by motion, for example, a motion to recommend approval. So along with the PC recommendation, with the summary of comments received, the public hearing should be transmitted to council for council to consider the ordinance amendment along the usual city charter process. So if you look in your notes, what I want to note to you is the definitions of electronic message board and electronic sign were added. The remainder of this Section 206 were not amended. So I had the attorney go through our ordinances, and those two in 2016 were eliminated. We feel that those need to be placed back in. So I just need to know if those two are going to be approval.
What do you think, Marvel?
All just definitions. I mean, we're not saying how they're going to be used.
Nope, just the definitions.
So Teresa, do you want me to go through each one in Section 206?
Nope, just go through electronic message board and electronic sign, and that should be good enough.
Okay. You want me to read those, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
Electronic message board, any sign display device or portion thereof with lighted messages that change in intervals by electronic process or remote control. Electronic sign, a portion of a sign incorporating electric lights, light-emitting diodes, LEDs, liquid crystal displays, LCDs, or similar elements that enable the display of remotely changeable or automatically changing text or graphics in a stationary display that change no more than once per hour. Good?
Yep, thank you.
So you just look for...
Recommendation for it to go to council, and then if we could have a roll call vote.
Okay.
I'll make recommendations.
Okay, you need a second on that?
I have a second.
Okay. Recommendations made by Roger to move to city council, second by Mick. Please take a roll.
Commissioner Shmansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Chair Whitloff.
Yes. Now, the only thing with the public hearing we didn't do was public, or public hearing is have a public comment on that. So even though we did approve it, I think we should have public comment. So if there's anyone in the audience that has anything on this public hearing, please come to the podium. You have five minutes and name an address, please.
All right.
None? Okay, we'll move along.
All right.
Okay, public comment on agenda-related items. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the chair. Also, if there will not be any interaction between the podium and audience, if these rules cannot be followed, the chair can adjourn the meeting a limit of five minutes to address the planning commission. So if anybody has anything on the agenda tonight, please come to the podium. Name an address, please, and you have five minutes.
I guess I'm not the right time to comment on this. I'm Brian Chick, 276 First Avenue, on short-term rentals. And Sammy did me a big favor by saying, telling you that short-term rentals are a business. I live in a residential area. I was told I couldn't run a business in my residential area, but now you can bring a short-term rental in and run it as a business. The state recognizes them as a business. I brought this up at the Meet the Forum, and to our representative, Van Der Wall, told me that the council already has the authority to shut them down, because they are a business in a residential area. So I don't see why we're even bringing it up, because she mentioned they're just like a hotel or motel. I mean, it's a business.
Right.
And our neighborhood gets upset during the summertime. I mean, this is a quiet neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, it turns into a zoo or a circus. And we've got cars coming in and out, and like, I think you brought up about two rooms to a house or stuff like that. We've seen four and five families show up at one little house. Where they sleep, we don't know. They're all over on the floor and that. And my feelings are, you should not let this go through. If you want to let it go to the public, let the public vote on it. Then I'll accept it. If the whole town wants to go to have daily rentals, I'm all for that. But as far as I'm concerned right now, it's a business. She said it's a business. The state recognizes it as a business. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You want to talk about what you want to talk about?
None? Okay. We will move along to new business. Next procedure for sale of city-owned property.
Yeah. I asked you about that. Do you have nothing to say about that?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, Teresa.
All right. So for new business, procedure for the sale of city-owned property, you've got that in your packet. It's for the 12th and Tamarack, a possible land division. So it was brought to our attention that there's some interested parties in purchasing the land. But what I want to make clear with you is, it is city-owned land, but it is in filer township. Now, all three sides of that property do touch the city. And in that, let me grab my paper here. Sorry.
Can that be put up on the screen, Teresa?
You can put it up on the screen.
Actually, you've got it right here. It's your yellow piece of paper in your packet.
I know, for the audience.
Oh, for the audience?
Yes.
Would you do that?
For the audience to see.
Do you know how to do that, or?
Transparency is what we're after.
Hey, don't, I don't know.
Something to harry and something to have to talk about.
Sure, go right ahead.
All right. So what, some of the options that talking with our attorney about is, well, I guess first I want to let you know that the city property is on all three sides, and all three of those sides is zoned R2, so I want to make that aware. With those properties, the minimum lot area could be a single unit, up to 6,000 square feet. The maximum lot coverage for those pieces of property would be 40%, and a minimum living area could be 960 square feet. So what we're looking at is potential housing in this area, possibly a subdivision. We do know that it has an overlay of wellheads right now, but those could be divided off where they would not be associated or close to the house. There would be enough of an access or easement for those. The next I want to go over is, a city can annex a charter township through three primary methods under MCL 42.34. So I suggested to the attorney if we could annex the property. With that, he said we could do three different areas. The first one would be state boundary commission petition, but looking through, that's a very lengthy, costly process. Number two, you could do a joint resolution, which both city and township must pass the resolution, quick but requires township consent, and simplest option if township agrees to it. Now, number three is under Act 425 agreement, contractual annexation with revenue sharings. We could allow transfer of zoning, utilities, and voting rights, and most appealing to the township due to financial benefits. So this would kind of be the recommended approach to do that, Act 425 agreement. And what I want to do is get your feeling on, what do you feel about us selling the property, value of the property, and is it something we want to do to promote housing and affordable housing? So I need some feedback from all of you.
Okay.
Is that zoned for housing, or what?
Yes, it is. It's zoned R2.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely need the housing.
Teresa, could we, could you put up the picture that you have that you gave out in our pamphlets?
Yep.
Yeah, she can do that.
Can you put that one, just right there in that spot?
So vacant land really doesn't do anybody any good, especially when you can't even hunt on it. So...
Right.
It's a deer sanctuary, is all it is right now. So, and certainly, the city does not have much property that can be used for housing. There's, just without tearing homes down, we really don't. This is probably the best parcel, that and off, all the way up through 12th Street, that piece of property as well. And this is kind of connecting into that. It's kind of the start. So I think it makes perfect sense for the city to be able to sell this and use it for housing. It certainly has benefit for everyone. And sharing revenue doesn't seem to be such a bad thing, especially if we're going to share on the utilities and...
Well, that'll be city utilities, wouldn't it?
Yes, we're promoting, yes, we're money for city water.
Right, city water, like, you know, and sewer.
Sewer, yep.
And fire also, probably, right? Fire, two fire departments.
Yeah.
We have a lot of non-conforming parcels in town, but let the seagull wait.
Yeah.
Time or another, but concentrate on this.
I'd say, Mark, go do the housing.
So I was a little bit confused when I was reading this earlier. I wasn't sure if we were making recommendations on how they should sell, or actually just this. I mean...
If they should sell.
I mean, the selling of property typically has not been something that we've been asked about in the past.
Right.
But that's the issue we had, if you recall. Okay, so we had, actually, I see it as we must have some say, as far as the property in the city did, which is a plus for us, because we were told we had none.
Right.
So I appreciate it.
I would say sell the property.
I would, yep.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that.
And again, I would think that, you know, we have enough data to come up with the appropriate price for the property. I mean, you have Realtor on the board.
Yeah, we have a plan to real it.
All right, great.
Okay.
May I have my packet back? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Is that what you're looking, Teresa?
Yes, yep.
So we can move along?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Okay.
Now, get into the meat and potatoes of this. Full business we have from December, planned unit development, 5th and Maple LLC conditions.
And in your packet, you've got the, it is the Planning Commission Resolution to Adopt a Special Use Permit for Planned Unit Development, the case number. That is in your packet. Just for you to review, we can, if you agree on those conditions, then we can go ahead and pass that and give that to Mr. Vider. Would you like me to review the conditions?
If you'd like, please.
Okay. So the conditions for the planned unit development, 5th and Maple LLC for five units. 5th and Maple LLC stated that the permits will be issued for all five units simultaneously. The units will be five building permits, not simultaneously. The units will be five building permits, not simultaneously. The two-story townhouses with gable-facing Maple Street and the driveway would be on the west side. There's going to be three two-bedroom units and two three-bedroom units. Each unit will have a carport. And an entrance is from the driveway. And the main entrance will be from Maple Street. Snow will be placed out of the way of vehicles in the parking area. Addresses will be labeled by 5th Street. Recommended a master deed or bylaws or covenant. The garbage was decided for individual cans for each unit. A pergola over the decks to create a modern vision of the porch. And that would be on the front side, which is on Maple Street. A narrow path or stepping pavers leading from the sidewalk on Maple Street to the porch of each unit, and it would be approximately 15 feet from the sidewalk. So if we are in agreement with all of those.
And you've been in discussion with the property owner, and they're comfortable with these amendments?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on these? We decide, we went through these in December.
Yep.
Um, any discussion? Will I take a motion to accept?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, the people that live in the house with the shared driveway, they have seen all this, and they're okay with this?
Well, they were in attendance at the last meeting. And they knew the recommendations then. They were invited today.
Well, weather-wise, they got far to come.
Right.
I know she had that property surveyed, because there was questions on the driveway.
Okay.
And you, Spicer was supposed to give you a copy of that.
I haven't seen anything, no.
Okay.
No, personally, I'm okay with this, Marko.
All right.
If you're.
I'll make a motion to accept with the provisions as read.
Okay.
I'll second that one, then.
Motion by Mick to accept the conditions as read, second by Roger. Any further discussion on this? If not, please stick around.
Before we do the, like, we have a timeframe in here.
Two years.
Two years?
Yep.
Okay.
But at that time, if an extension is wanted, it's usually granted. Just need a stipulation of why. Or sometimes they're asked to come back to the PC to give an update or why the extension is.
And that starting date is when, when they start nailing?
When the resolution is signed.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And when the permit is processed, yep.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So most of the entrances will be in and off of Maple Street?
The main entrances.
Their main entrance for walking. But to park it would be in the back, like we had showed in the pictures in December.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, please stick around.
Commissioner Shemansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride. No. Chair Whitliff.
Yes. Motion passed. Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, good luck.
Next one is short-term rentals.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Hey. Don't leave.
I decided to come up here just to present, make it a little bit easier. If I need any corrections, or if I need any assistance, I'll be calling on Tracy Davis from Housing North. She's here with us today. So here we are again. We're talking about short-term rental. I've given to you in the past packets regarding short-term rental. And today, I want to make it a little bit simpler. I want it to be easy, but I need some discussion. I need to know from all of you, what are your feelings on it? And where do we see this going for short-term rental? I would like to just say, my opinion of this is, we need it to be regulated. We need to make sure that our building inspector can go out, see what's being occupied, and he can go in and get them registered. So with that, all of you have got on page one, at the very top, it is the draft regulatory ordinance for the Planning Commission information. So I'm going to read number one in this. It says, the number 868.01, purpose and intent. Do we have any discussion?
Anything from the commission?
Anybody from the commission? Okay.
None.
The next one is 80, or 868.02, definitions. Next is 868.03, registration required. Letter A, registration required. Any short-term rental dwelling unit shall be registered with the city on an annual basis. Now, I believe this is something that we need to discuss about, right there, we're talking annual basis. That means every year, they will be inspected, and every year, if they pass inspection, they will be certified or recertified. So with that annual basis, we would like to ask if that could happen in January. That is our department's slower time. And that's when we could see that maybe for the first month, from January 1st to the 31st, that we could have that annual basis.
That, for me, that sounds where we should be.
The only thing that I, the only question that I have is, you have a lot of summertime vacation rentals. It may be a challenge if they're not being occupied.
But they could always do that by mail, email, stuff like that, though.
Mm-hmm.
But they could.
Well, I think that's fair enough. Jay, you're.
So when we go to the, continue on to the registration requirements, there are two things that we would like to add in, I think it begins with one, two, and three. We noticed that there was no spot in this area for required insurance. So we want to make sure that we put something in place to say that they're required to carry insurance. I know later on, in the section, it goes over the dollar amount of what they should carry for the insurance. But we would still like that presented in there. Something else that we'd like to add?
But insurance, are we talking about liability?
Liability insurance, correct.
If I don't carry, you know, if the owner doesn't want to pay for the insurance on his home, that's his loss.
His choice, right.
But we want to definitely have insurance for the occupant.
Yes. Yep. The next, and this is in your packet, I have it highlighted, you'll see in the building code, it's the building number 1482.05, and I'm going to grab that. So we noticed that this was not put in there. Do all of you have it? It's that page with the yellow towards the bottom. Highlighted in your packet. Do you see it, Mick?
I haven't found it yet.
Inspections by rental, is that what you're?
Yes.
All right.
1482.05, inspections by rental unit inspector prior to permit issuance. So that needs to be added, that whole paragraph A.
Okay.
So we'd like that to be done.
Okay.
The next, if you go to the letter G, that should be corrected and say, cities be a good neighbor guide. Just a simple correction that we saw needed to be done. Number three, at the bottom of page four, it says, pay an annual registration fee to the city. We can at this time talk about annual registration fee, but that might be something that, once we recommend this to council, that they pick possibly the registration fee, or put it on council to decide that.
Yeah. I agree. I don't think it's our point to determine fees.
I agree.
So do any of you have anything to add to any of that section so far, or?
We, let's just get it done.
Capping? Yeah, the limitations in capping of.
That too. So we can present it this way, we can discuss about capping. Or we can move forward, and at this time, not have a cap. We could ask and recommend that city council look at the cap, have them set the cap.
Yeah, that's true.
Or do we revisit it in a year, and then decide on the cap?
I would like to see city council set the cap. Yep.
Well, yeah, we could do it that way.
And if we.
And then if it can revisit that in a year, is that possible?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
But it's gonna, it's harder and harder the longer, so it needs to be determined if, so I would like to find out exactly how many of the vacation rentals are not in the permitted areas that we outlined in the maps.
Okay, I actually can bring that up. Is it the overlay?
Because I think that's where the controversy comes in, where you have, you have rental units that are embedded in the smaller communities.
But are you talking long-term or short-term?
So this is the program that we just started using, the Granicus software. So this right here is showing you compliant, the not compliant, of course, the unknown compliance status, and then not yet identified. So you can take a look at all of those right now.
But part of what I was looking at is, in the maps, we were talking about front properties being exempted, that the condominiums were going to be exempted. And the downtown district, so I, you know, again, you can see that there's quite a few of those little green dots are already in those areas.
Right.
So it'd be interesting to understand, you know, what we're looking at as far as capping the rest.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And if I go to the next slide, that shows you where possibly we could do the short-term rental cap exemption, all of those spaces in red.
Right. Because it already meets, that's not in an R1.
Right.
It is not, this is not considered residential, or at least for vacation rentals. I think Mr. Chick brought up the point that, in his neighborhood, they're not, they're businesses, and by a business, it needs to have gone through the process of having a special use permit in order for it to be a business.
Right.
And they have not.
Yeah.
Are they, are they registered?
Well, a lot of them, you saw, they weren't.
Weren't.
Yeah, there's not a lot on that side.
Yep.
This is just two other pages, just some extra data that we had. So we have the 165 short-term rental units. As you can see, just in the past 30 days, there's been three new. And so all the short and long term is 356.
Really?
Is that 356 with the apartment complex, though? Was it Hillside or Hillcrest over on the north side?
Yep.
Is that included in that?
Yep.
Okay.
And then just the other last slide, just some bedroom and bathroom statistics that they have up there from Granicus. So if we can continue on. So if we're all on page six, possibly, if we could turn to page six. And again, with the draft ordinance, as you see, letter H is at the very top of page six. And it says, change of ownership. Now, this whole paragraph is, you read it two, three, four times, and it's a little confusing. This is where we need to remind ourselves, if we're going to make this cap, if we're going to have it, desired cap here. And if we're going to have the next owner continue the process, or is it the next owner, the short-term rental is finished, and they won't be able to continue the property.
Oh, I see.
Of it being a short-term rental.
And I think that is going to be necessary if there's going to be a cap. Because otherwise, how?
Correct.
If you have an overage, you don't, you're not going to be dragging people out of their homes and taking their business opportunity away, if they've made their investments. So it has to have some way of shrinking, if that is the desired effect.
Right. And again, with the cap, if we did not want to make, you know, this decision here, we could recommend that we ask council for their assistance by, we recommend the short-term rental, but having them assist us with what the cap would be.
Yeah, I would say that we would recommend a cap and then let.
Them decide from there?
Council.
Or do you want city council to recommend it?
Well, I would say, I would say, city council should recommend what the cap is. We just recommend that there should be one, that it just doesn't become unlimited.
Right.
You could buy that, a lot of times, by saying, one family. Well, you could have 25 people that are all in your family.
Well, I think part of this addresses that, that in these rules and regulations, we address the fact that you can't have more people than what the home is designed for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when the building official goes into that, he will be able to tell you, from the property maintenance codes, how many people are allowed in that.
By square foot.
Yes, correct. And how many, it will sleep and all of that.
Right, right.
Yep, so that will all be stated on there, on the certificate.
Yeah.
So can, so the next page, page seven.
All right.
Letter M. I would recommend, we glanced the.
Page eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I have page seven at the bottom. Okay.
Yeah, next page.
Page eight. Letter M.
Okay.
Allocation of short-term rental registration. In there, it talks and discusses about, to conduct a lottery.
Oh, if there's more than, okay, yeah.
Maybe we eliminate that?
I would. Could you give a reason why on that, Teresa?
Well, not guaranteed year to year, and especially if you're not in that overlay. What if I had the business, and then I went for a lottery? And this is what I've had going for several years. I'm thinking I'm automatically, I can continue it, and now I'm part of a lottery.
Yeah. And you don't get picked.
That's right.
Yeah.
But I think the lottery was designed to allow new people to come in, if the cap is flexible.
Flexible.
Not, it's not for the people who are, I think that all the discussions prior is that there would be a grandfather clause for those who are playing by the rules now.
So with that, we'd have to really dig down and define a grandfather clause, because you have, sale of property as, could fall into a grandfather clause, correct?
Correct, possibly.
We're in a business for several years.
I think that's where they're talking about, the other paragraph was designed where, if, if a property was a vacation rental and it's sold, the vacation rental necessarily does not go with the property.
Correct. If it's not in that overlay, correct.
It's not one of the overlay.
Right. And that's how they would fall off. Right.
So what you're recommending is section M be removed out of this?
Either removed, or we have to.
Rewrite.
For next meeting. For next meeting, we need to make sure that we've got a clarification or a better wording of that.
So, what is, what is everybody's feeling on section M?
What's that?
What is your feeling on section M?
No, I'll, I understand what you're talking about, and it makes sense if, and if it's simpler to have it removed, I, I'd say have it removed. It's making it more complicated than it is.
Okay. Marlene?
Yeah, I think whatever, the board all agrees on it, but as long as it has some kind of insurance and stuff, I'm fine with that.
Mick?
I think I'm, I'm confused of which number it is.
You're right here.
So, okay, okay, so, um, well, like I said, I think these are all kind of connected to?
With the grandfather?
Grandfather.
Yep.
What do you do if you have 25 people wanting two spots?
Spots, right.
You have to have?
Then we need the bridge in there.
A better, a little way of determining that. I would say that that would be why, and then would be explained, that this is how we would manage it if there was an overage.
Okay. Yeah. What is, obviously, there?
If there was in, a, a new availability for vacation rentals.
Okay.
So, yea or nay on a removal of section?
I wouldn't remove it, because I think it's going to, it's all contingent about what, is there going to be a, a limiting number, and if so, what is that number? And if, if you're going to say, we're only going to have 50 vacation rentals outside of the areas that we've already determined we want vacation rentals, then how do you get there? So, there has to be those mechanisms.
Okay.
Well, I thought we didn't want vacation rentals.
Well?
Unlimited.
Unlimited. It was always, first of all, managing it is number one concern. And then, second of all, it just, by managing it, we also have to take into account the current homeowners and, and what are their opinions on whether or not, you know, how much and how often they want their neighbors out of town.
We discussed all this years ago when?
Many, many times.
Yeah, and that, and then it was sent to city council to limit how many, and they, they limited more than what we had suggested, you know, back then, you know?
So, so, it, it really needs to be, city council needs to determine?
Yeah.
The numbers, and then those other things, they either fit or they don't fit, depending on what, what they say.
So, you're recommending just have council?
Yeah, I, I think these, there's a place for this if we're going to limit the number of vacation rentals.
Okay.
Then you have to have a mechanism to do that, because we don't want to, how are we going to, you know, if they say it's 50 and we've got 100, well, what do you do with the 50? You have to have some kind of way of managing it. Or, if they say there's 100 and we only have 50, how do you get the other 50? If, you have to have some mechanism for them to apply.
So, would Mick would like to see this remain, and is that, is that good with everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When it's that way, I'll have to go along with it.
Then we will?
Okay.
Move along, keep it in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you, Mick.
And again, these are just some things that we've reviewed, suggestions. Obviously, this is from the attorney, this is what's recommended.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, does anybody have any other questions? I don't believe I had any others.
No, I don't, I don't have anything offhand. It's hard to know until you get into it, you know? You can save anything or make any kind of rule, but until you get into it, it's hard to figure it out.
It'd been a lot easier in 2016 when it first?
So, I'm going to ask Tracy, do you have anything to add, or would you like to come up?
Uh, I, just give me a second.
Okay. Yep.
The only other thing is violations, how these remedies, that's in, in this, on section 10 to 45.
What page are you on, Mark?
Uh, page 11.
Oh, page 11.
Yeah.
Oh, violations, okay. How about the civil infractions?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, violations?
Yeah, this is one of the more, more important ones.
Mm-huh. What are you suggesting, or what do you?
Why, what's the matter?
Well, this one was highlighted, so, everyone take a look at it. I, I think it's good.
Yep.
We need to put some teeth into it to protect people, protect our, our citizens.
Yep. And I sat down with the building official to go over all of these.
Right.
We like the two-year calendar year, you know, that's in there a couple times. The three strikes, you're out.
Yep. It'd be two, but we'll three.
Yep.
I, I, I think it's spot on, Teresa.
Yeah, I think it'd be all right.
You've put a lot into this.
Yeah.
Anything else from the members?
No, I'm good, Mark.
And then, on this, Teresa, we take a motion?
Uh, no, not today.
Not today.
So, I just kind of want to go over what the next steps are.
Okay.
So, after we reviewed this today, we're going to have one more time that we're going to review it at the next meeting in March. After that, we need to schedule a public hearing, and at that time, with the public hearing, we'll hear from everyone on all the residents. Then we can make any revisions to the ordinance based on comments that we receive, and then the planning commission holds a public hearing, make a recommendation to council on the zoning ordinances. Then the city council will consider and act on the zoning ordinance and regulatory ordinances. So, those are just kind of our steps for that.
All right, then. So, we're probably looking at about May to get this taken care of?
April.
April, okay. All right.
Oh, yeah, April for us, yeah, then the council, yeah.
Yep, okay.
So, would you like to come up, Tracy? Or don't you have anything to add? Nope, good. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And you're going to make the corrections that we came up with tonight as far as caps and things from council, Mark?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Okay, public comments and communication?
Yeah.
If there's anyone in the audience that has any, anything to add to this, please come to the podium, name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yep.
I wasn't expecting to talk today, but can we talk about that project? Okay. Teresa brought up the potential of residential use for the Tamarack property, and we have brought to the city's attention to possibly use that for residential space. I know that we're waiting for Spicer Group to figure out where all the wellheads are and how many homes we could fit in that area. Just FYI, I do want your guys' opinion on if this is worth us taking to city council to get approval, or if this is something that we should continue to just discuss.
Well, I don't think it would hurt to go to city council and, and let them know that this is something, and just get their desires right off the bat, so.
Okay.
I think, I think housing is a big enough issue in the city of Manistee that everyone wants to know what's going on, and when things are percolating, they'd like to know what, what it is.
Okay.
See how that could help.
Okay. Okay. Do you think that this is something that we should expedite and get to, like, the March meeting, or is this, where do you guys?
As soon as you could, yeah.
Okay.
If, if you're up against the timeline, I would put some gas into it.
Okay. All right. So, I'm good.
Thank you.
Before you walk away, now, who, who, who are you?
Apologies. I'm Emerson Sheeks with City Shore Real Estate Company. I'm a realtor here in town, and me and my broker have kind of spearheaded, um, making sure that this town gets more development and more homes in the area, and we, I saw this property and just kind of thought, well, it's not being used, it's been sitting next to the high school, and it's, right now, it's storage for the city. So, with all the old wellheads on there, and I think that it's huge potential. And like, I think Michael said, that it's basically a deer lot, right?
Right now?
Yeah, right now, it's just being used as for?
Could be a deer collar, right?
Deer. So, I know that there's some mix-up about whether or not this is something that the city would even want to go for, consider, exactly, because this would be, it would be a partnership.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, Mike said, we definitely need to house, yeah, I'd, I'd go before council, see what they have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All righty.
Anyone else? None? Okay. Staff board reports?
So, as you know, we received the redevelopment-ready community, the RRC recertification. I just want to say again, Andrew was great, uh, great help in doing that, and really proud of us in getting that done. You know, Andrew and I both coming on new, we had to really go through it and figure all of that out, so, it was a good partnership, so it was a big help. The next, all of you've got your Michigan Association of Planning, two in your packet there. They're both, they have valuable information in those, so go ahead and take a look at those. Oh, one other thing about the redevelopment-ready community, we're good now until 2030, so.
Good.
That's great.
Wait, four years, I thought. 2028, no?
No, 2030 in the email. Is that what he had said before? No, you get 2030. Well, we still have to do things every year, but 2030?
I thought he said we're good for four years, though.
No, no, our email's 2030. A major wrote it down.
That'd be five years.
That'd be five years, exactly.
All right.
Yep. Next, in your packet, you got your permits report.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Got that?
Yeah.
And then, last page is the MSU classes. Now, I don't know if you paid attention to that, that is a great deal, actually, Mark had found that. $60 for all six classes, and they're just through a webinar. So, we could offer, if you didn't have a computer, you could do them here or in my office, um, in the conference room, but that's a really great deal to have that.
Yeah, it is.
We can do that at home also, can't we, Teresa?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely, or we could do it together, I mean, any of those things.
Any way you can do it?
Yep.
I'm for it.
Yes.
I, I would believe all six members will be, and maybe seventh, once we get that new member, so.
Yeah, we have it anticipated for?
It's, it's been advertised now, it's, Kelly put the notice out.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay. All right.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, good. Okay.
Member discussion, Roger?
Not a thing, uh, things are going pretty good, kiddo.
Okay.
So, I'm good, thank you.
That's excellent.
Oh, thank you for the vice chair position.
Oh, you're welcome. Oh, you gotta salt your sidewalk, because I was kind of sliding down, I thought I was on skis, you know?
I made it. Okay, I'll do it. All right.
He was hoping for a funniest home video.
Yeah.
Oh, you almost got one.
Yes, you almost got it, yeah.
All right. Marlene?
I know, I think it did a lot of, put a lot of work into this?
Yeah.
Things, and I appreciate that, and welcome our new one, little one here, and?
Thank you.
And, uh, I think everything's rolling along good.
Yeah.
Mick?
Again, just welcome Kaylin, and I don't have anything else for the group.
I have a couple things. It's almost nine o'clock, so. Uh, one thing, I mentioned you, Mick, in maybe last month, was, what do you think about setting goals for everyone for 2025, all members?
Setting goal for members?
Yeah, yeah.
Whoa.
I know, big news, but, um?
That's something to think about.
Okay. I mean, I have a goal for all the planning commission. I want to see if I can get, get you paid, so that's, that's my goal.
I had it all about 10 years ago. You see how much you're getting paid.
Yeah, but I'm a kraut, so.
Yeah.
We'll see about that one, okay?
I'll go with that goal.
Okay. But I, you know, something to think about?
Yeah, it is.
For 2025. Next one is, we, we lost Bob, which hurts. Good guy.
Oh, yeah.
I have a catalog, so I would love to have your opinion on getting something for him, a plaque, everybody pitch in, a plaque showing our appreciation for Bob. We can maybe, if, if all comes together, we could do this in March, our meeting in March. And I did talk with the mayor about having a proclamation for Bob and get that going too, so. He was a hell of a member, a go-to guy, just a little bulldog, and he will be missed, so, but he'll be back around. So, yep. He was a?
Bulldog, eh?
Oh, he was a bulldog, but he, uh, he, he did a lot for us, so.
Yeah, he did, he did.
But with that, it is nine, or 8:51, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, motion, and see you next month.
We survived. So, we can go home by nine.
You want me to get more?
That's the most important thing. Congratulations, sir.
I with this.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, this is like?
Something nice.
And it's round.
I don't know.
My wife, they do something similar down at PES.
These are nice, I actually, I've received a couple of those where you have a little clock.